Start to get extra confused now with all the big school stuff. Looking at all the school stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll get another clock after Mike's here.
Okay.
He was waiting.
Oh, yeah.
Patiently.
Waiting patiently.
That is.
Sure.
Good evening, how are you?
How about you?
Hi. Yeah, we're good.
Good.
Thanks for asking me.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. I will talk about it. Thank you.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
No?
It is, but.
So what brings you in this evening?
Oh, yes, so um. They came in to talk about the prosecutor we've been using, Michael Bozalay as a regional prosecutor since two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Uh, so he's a regional prosecutor for seven towns. He's an employee of Antrim, uh, New Hampshire, um, and works out of the Antrim Police Department. He covers Dublin, Antrim, Benetton, Deering, Noobswitch, Hancock, Fitzwilliam. If I missed any, uh, those are the seven. And unfortunately, Mike Bozalay, um, is, uh, leaving the position and is going into private practice. And it leaves a void for seven towns and seven towns trying to find a prosecutor. Means we're all fighting for one that might be available. The benefit of a regional prosecutor is it kept the cost low versus like the town having to hire its own prosecutor or lawyer. So we've been spending somewhere in the range between, you know, twenty-eight and thirty-four thousand a year, depending on how far back you want to look at the historical data. So this year we budgeted for thirty-six thousand and I think by the end of the year, we're going to be around thirty-three thousand in, uh, total expenses for the prosecutor. So as you can imagine, it puts all of these towns in a position, especially the one I'm most concerned about is Noobswitch. And we now essentially by the tenth of December, we'll no longer have a prosecutor. And it leaves us and six other towns in the same position. And, um, we learned this information about three weeks ago. And since then, most chiefs, we've been talking regularly on the phone, trying to come up with a solution as a group, trying to keep the prosecutor group going if possible, and we have no solution. At this point, every, almost everybody, except for the exception of Mr. Tim Sullivan, that we've approached, has declined. And they're like, well, there are, we're, everybody's maxed out with their own caseloads. So we're at a point where we gotta make a decision, uh, moving forward, how, how we're gonna do this. And, uh, nobody in my agency is a lawyer, nobody in my agency, including myself, has the experience to prosecute. It's a very detailed, in-depth and, uh, technical position. There's many types of hearings, motions, reviews, all the stuff that can take hours and hours of research to respond to a motion from a defense counsel. So we really don't have many choices. So the only lawyer that I've spoken to, which happened to become a lead from, um, the towns council, Upton and Hatfield, is Timothy Sullivan, which is on the paperwork that I gave you. And he is a former prosecutor for the attorney general. And he has a lot of experience prosecuting. And he's agreed, still working under the umbrella of Upton and Hatfield, to help out. And that's the only person or attorney that so far has been willing to help out Noobswitch.
So that would be just help out Noobswitch?
For now, yeah.
Not as.
And we're pursuing as a group, still trying to come up with a solution as a, as a regional prosecutor. So that means we have to find a prosecutor that A wants to do that, B, we gotta find a, a home for that person. Which town's gonna be the host? Antrim was the host for Mike Bozalay for sixteen years. He's been a regional prosecutor. So we'd have to find an agency or a town, Noobswitch, Fitzwilliam, Dublin, you name it, that would have to be the host town and become an employee of that town. If that's the way they chose to be, unless they were ten ninety-nine or, you know, ran their own LLC, uh, and just worked independent of the town.
So did Tim not want to do multiple towns?
Correct.
Oh.
But he would work for Noobswitch.
To help us out, yeah, but it comes at a very big cost. The town rate is two hundred dollars an hour. And that's what he has to charge under Upton and Hatfield. And it's the only option we have.
How much is the, the other, the previous one?
We paid thirty-six thousand for the year and he does about ten hours a week worth of work.
So let's say it's two thousand thirty-six.
Yeah, so it's, we're, we're kind of stuck and, uh, the, there's a matrix that we used as the, the group prosecution and it figured out how much we paid based on a metric of caseload versus and population. So they took those seven towns, took their population, took their caseload, uh, with through, through data and said, hey, this is your percentage of the operating cost to run this prosecutor. And that's how we came up with thirty-three thousand dollars last year, well, twenty twenty-three. And then I think the year before, we might have paid a little bit more, um, if I had to go back to the budget. So I taught, I was talking to Prosecutor Bozalay just before I got here again and, you know, it's based upon the, the percentage wise, he said, well, he said, I can, I couldn't tell you exactly how many hours I spend on Noobswitch because I juggle seven towns every day, all the time. So he said, but if you went off the percentage, it's about twelve hours a week. So that's where our average is.
So what would you say, like, if you compared, uh, cases? Like, how's Noobswitch's caseload compared to Antrim?
Well, very similar, was similar, yeah.
Not compared to Jaffrey, though?
No, no, and yeah, Jaffrey's not part of the group.
Yeah, Jaffrey has been a prosecutor.
But, uh, we did approach Jaffrey PD and ask them if they would want to get in the prosecutor's group as having another form of funding to attract a full-time person to take this job and they said they would entertain it when the time is right. Whatever that means, I don't know, so.
Yeah, so I can see the, the cost difference now with his estimate of about twelve hours.
Yeah.
A week, you know, that puts him at about sixty bucks an hour is what we were paying essentially.
Yeah.
Uh, if that like is an accurate, yeah, estimate at the time, so.
I'd say seventy.
Yeah, and our numbers are, you know.
Depending. Well, I divided it by ten.
Yeah, we average, I did a five-year average, we average seventy-five a rest of the year. And that doesn't include, you know, other violations that are, people issued fines for, which could result in court action, meaning anytime you give somebody a fine, they ultimately have the right to go to court and try it. So some of the hearings, you know, that we encounter, there's ALS hearings, trials, return of firearms, there's the, um, there's motions to continue, motions to impose sentencing, BL hearings, arraignments, PC hearings, juvenile arraignments, juvenile trials, juvenile dispositional hearings, juvenile reviews, and it just goes on. And all of these take somebody to go to court, prosecute or defend a motion to dismiss. So a very popular one would be to, um, uh, motion to, um, dispose of the evidence, right? So a lot of times people or defendants, when they have evidence against them, one of the things they always just try to see if it happens. If it works, they'll try to make a motion to dispose of the evidence, meaning that they, they make an argument that the, the evidence wasn't obtained legally. And so you have to defend that as a prosecutor or as the state, uh, and that's, you know, a skilled person to do that. Right, how do you, how do you fight that in court? And the other part, which is kind of a bad timing part, is starting January first, we're going back to what they call felonies, well, reversing felonies first, which put all felonies in the Superior Court. Now all felony case, cases will be arraigned in Circuit Court, which is gonna increase our caseload at the Circuit Court. So what that means is Mike Bozalay only prosecuted violations of misdemeanor Bs and misdemeanor As. So Superior Courts all prosecuted by the county attorney's office. So Mike Bozalay only did violations, um, misdemeanors and A B. So now if they come back, which they are, January one, they've reversed felonies first process, which took place in twenty seventeen, and now we're gonna have felony arraignments going back to the Circuit Court. Which is gonna increase the case, cases going to Superior, I mean, to Circuit Court. This year we had about eight, so far we've had about eight or ten felony arrests. And those were nothing that our prosecutor had to touch. It all went to the county attorney's office. Next year, starting January one, our prosecutor will be required to handle those cases.
Couldn't be better timing.
It's getting better each week.
So then I, I look like, well, I have, it might be slightly out of date, uh, November seventh. You had said how much money was left in your prosecutor line?
Oh, uh.
On November seventh, it was twenty-nine hundred dollars. Or, there's thirty-nine hundred, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's exactly what I, uh.
So that gives us about twenty hours of work in this guy.
Yeah, for the rest of the year. Uh, well, probably not. Um, we have several trials scheduled for December. Some of them are involved, we have three or four witnesses subpoenaed and, um, he's gonna try to cover as many as he can till about the eighth or tenth of December and then he's done. And after that, we're gonna be on our own. And there's no way somebody like myself is gonna go in there and defend, uh, adequately against a skilled defense attorney. I'm gonna be like the guy from the YMCA boxing in the ring and then Mike Tyson comes in and I gotta box him. It's not gonna go well, right? So, um, I don't know if there's any will go room with the conversation with Upton and Hatfield on the cost. I didn't think it was quite necessary to go that far yet, we'd have to make a decision. We really don't have a choice, other than not having a prosecutor at all, which means victims don't get justice, so. We're in a tough spot.
Okay, this may seem a little off topic, but in the past, we talked about, um, passing the, the rules, uh, or the laws to be within the responsibility of the town, which we all signed the paperwork to do that.
What?
You know, about weight limit tickets, speeding tickets?
Ordinances?
All the ordinances?
Yeah, yeah.
And so has that been accomplished and are you making?
No, we don't think we've made any amendments to any of the ordinances, other than the detail one probably. I think that's still a work in progress, if I remember correctly.
I thought we did a whole, we signed off a whole year, didn't we?
You signed off on one.
One?
And then it got kicked down the road.
Yeah, we reviewed ordinances.
I've sent them to you.
There are active ordinances right now.
Yeah.
We reviewed them, but we haven't done much.
But anyway.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is if, if we complete that project, that would be another source of income to offset the cost of a, of a, of this lawyer.
Well, maybe if people violated.
Right.
I don't think we could really budget for that.
Yeah, but I mean, if you go back to the history of what the violations were, what the number of violations were, you can say that it's going to be within plus or minus ten percent of that per coming in.
Possibly. I look at the budget here, it looks like, um, we overbudgeted on fuel.
Sure did.
Yeah, so there would be ways of covering, it gets back into moving money around. But in an emergency situation, I think your point of, of having these cases tried is, it's important.
It's the, it's the culmination of what we do, you know, and, and the, um, the reality is, you know, I think we can work within our, but our operating, PD operating budget this year easily. Uh, there's, there's quite the surplus based upon, um, you know, not having one position filled for a length of time. And other line items that were, um, you know, we're not gonna spend a hundred percent on. I think is last estimate is a hundred and nine thousand surplus. That's after completing what we would need to complete the year.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't.
And then budget for next year, you're just, you're gonna have to add it into your budget.
Yeah.
But I wonder if we could talk with Upton and Hatfield and see if a prosec, prosecutor, um, can have a little different charge than what we're paying for, you know what I mean? Is there anywhere else?
I think it's worth the conversation and I would probably, you know, go, go beyond Timothy Sullivan and go to the, the shareholders. Or whoever the, the manager or the boss of that company is or the owner. I would probably go to them because he's just, he's not gonna have the answer, he has to operate off of their costs.
Right, right.
But he's been very helpful, I mean, he, he's super eager to help out. I told him I might only need him for a month, I might only need him for six months, eight months, that we definitely are moving towards trying to get a regional prosecutor back in play and then that bring the cost hopefully way back down again compared to two hundred dollars an hour. So we've been lucky for twelve, fourteen, fifteen years using this regional prosecutor. And the, you know, the other thing is, well, let's say, we don't even talk about that, but that's where we're at. As far as twenty twenty-three goes, I'm not worried about the budget, like, we'll make it happen, you know. But it's just moving forward for next year, twenty twenty-four, do we, do we increase our budget? Do we encumber funds and put it aside? And the only reason I mention that is if we default to a twenty twenty-three budget with thirty-six thousand in the prosecutor line, what do we do next year?
Does a default budget work that way, that all budget lines remain the same?
Unless you have contracts.
No, but I mean, a default budget gives you a new number to work with rather than a proposed budget, but does it, does it?
If you had a contract with a prosecutor for twenty twenty-four, you could put that in your twenty twenty-four default budget.
All I'm saying is, when it goes to default, does that lock in every line item in a budget? Or does it lock in the bottom line number? That's my question.
I'd say, I'd say the bottom line, yeah.
Cause then you still wiggle right around.
Right.
You're just limited to what you had last year or what's in a default budget.
Yeah, so that creates.
So then you wouldn't be necessarily locked in to only having thirty-six thousand.
Right, right.
But it would take some creativity.
Yeah, there would be some money available based upon however the, the year went.
So who would reach out to Upton and Hatfield and, I mean, Debbie's talked to them a lot in the last few months, I think.
I actually.
Now, is Michael a partner?
I don't know if Mike's, I don't think he is.
Cause that's our main point of contact, him and, um, Natalie.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think Mike's a partner, though.
I would, I would say that it would make sense for Debbie to reach out to whoever your most comfortable, you know, contact is and see if they can put something in the motion to go before the board or something.
When I talked to Tim, he said he would be willing to, if he could do, like, if they could work it out at Upton and Hatfield, that he would willing to do like a couple of days a week and do a few towns to defray the cost.
I didn't get that from him and it, you know, and I, you know, there was comments about he still has to answer to his bosses and whether things would work out even with us. Um, he, he felt pretty confident that, you know, he could maybe sustain us, but he still has other projects that are going on. So he, he, he made it pretty clear that like, too many hours is not an option.
Okay.
Right.
I thought, cause when he, when I talked to him.
I didn't get that impression and we talked three or four times now.
Okay, yeah, I only talked to him that one day and then deferred him to you.
And he's, he's super excited and like I said, he was a prosecutor for the attorney general's office, he's highly skilled, so, you know, he's definitely a guy to have on your side.
Yeah.
So you mind if Debbie picks up and, yeah, so let's pick up the conversation and try to wrap it all together, all the pieces?
When your vacation's over, right?
I am taking tomorrow off, so don't call me, don't look at me, don't email me.
You, I promise.
All right, thank you for the update.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate.
But there's, there's, uh, hope of some coverage, yeah.
Yeah.
Even though it is at a higher rate, but, uh, still be able to get the job done, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's giving me heartburn for sure.
And for some reason, I thought you were coming in to talk about the public hearing that we had, three, two, three weeks ago.
I did too.
I thought it was.
And so I told Peter, well, you might as well come in if we're gonna be talking about that, cause I just saw Chief Abel.
She's been sick and tired, so.
No, I understand.
Since that wasn't the, uh.
But that's okay, I, I realized it today or yesterday, when I was looking at the, listening to the minutes from last week and they brought up you coming in to talk about that, the, um, the Warren article and stuff, the public hearing. And I'm like, oh, that's who it was, cause I couldn't re, I'm like, I know I talked to somebody and said six o'clock on Tuesday, but I couldn't remember who it was. So I looked at the text from you and I said, we had a pub, non-public at five, so it'll probably be around six.
It'll be.
There you go.
Yeah.
So.
So I don't know, before we, um, if we're not going to discuss that, before these two gentlemen take their leave, if they could offer their opinions on the stop sign discussion, I know I copied you on an email, I don't know if you saw it.
Yeah.
And I talked to Peter about three potential changes.
Yeah, I'd have to get my, refresh my memory for me and I would definitely.
So one was, if you come on Going Road from Ashby Road and you're driving towards Smithville, then you come into Smithville, there's a stop sign there.
To the right.
On Going Road.
Right, yeah.
And, and I was told it was there because you couldn't see coming around that corner and it was for safety for pedestrians, which there's a lot in Smithville.
Yeah.
Now, all the trees have been cut down.
The hedges, yeah.
And coming up Going Road is a clear sight. And so I thought, just to allow smooth traffic flow.
Or you thought a yield.
But having a yield to me is, like, what are you yielding to?
Yeah, I think the stop sign's appropriate, I mean, especially if people are coming out of, um, I forget, I'm so, I forget his name, the guy who lives on the corner, this, he used to be in the cemetery.
Hollywood.
Hollywood's right there, so, and then there's the yellow house in the back there, you know, they, if they come out of their driveway, which is just after that right off of Going on to Smithville, you know, if people are coming through there at twenty, then they, you know, I know the hedges are down now, but what if they grow back? Then we're looking at talking about this stop sign issue again.
Which you would have to deal with.
Right, yeah. So I, I think it's so appropriate to have that stop sign there, it gives people a moment of pause to look and get to the intersection.
The other traffic that's coming into there though too is stopping as well, coming from Page Hill Way.
Yeah.
Right up to there.
Yeah.
As it's crossing over.
Yeah.
The flow of traffic.
Coming down off of Page Hill or Page Hill, it's like some stops and then, you know, Smithville or Page Hill is right away with no stop or yield. And then it's a yield, I believe, you know, at the four, it's a stop, stop sign both, but, um, a couple of roads split.
Yeah, and so I understand, um, that it's convenient for houses, but there's many houses on intersections.
Sure.
So why these two would be special. And the speed limit's already twenty-five through there.
Yeah, Smithville's thirty-five. And Golden Road is twenty-five.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That's funny.
How fast do you go?
I don't, I think I've been down.
Don't ask.
I think I've gone down Going Road twice since I moved.
Yeah.
But anyways, it seemed to me.
But my backyard backs up to it, so.
My whole point in doing this is just to, um, allow traffic to run more freely. And another, another reason, I shouldn't say that's my only point, my other reason is when, when we have pointless stop signs, it encourage, it's, makes it hard for people to follow the law. We experienced that on Page Hill, I brought that up here before, where Page Hill was stopped and a new subdivision had a right of way, right on the corner. Page Hill stopped both directions, the new subdivision, private road now has a right of way. And it was like that and the residents on Page Hill, um, I don't know who it was, they would rip it up and chuck it in the woods.
Yeah.
And then the highway department would have to come and put it back up. I finally came to the selectman and I said, can you take a run down there? Because I wanna teach my kids to follow the law.
Right.
But when you make me stop for no reason, it's really hard. It's hard to train my kids to follow the law.
Yeah, and driving twenty-five is painful for anybody, but it's the law.
Twenty-five is another thing we've talked about here. But so that's, that is the two reasons why I brought up, there was Going Road and then there was, um, at the end of.
Benny Hill and Poor Farm.
Yeah, at the end of Poor Farm, yeah. So you come down Poor Farm Road and you stop. It seems in my mind that the majority of traffic is coming down Poor Farm Road, not West Benny Hill Road. Like, by a long shot, there's only.
So you're thinking about sort of a stop sign on West Benny Hill and removing the one at the end of Page?
That's what my other thought was, on, on, yeah, move that, just rotate that stop sign over to West Benny Hill and allow Poor Farm. Cause there's several new subdivisions up there and I say new, that's relatively speaking. But a lot more houses.
And so it would have. But what do we do with traffic that comes up Benny Hill and on to West Benny Hill? And if somebody's coming off Poor Farm and they can't see clearly, so you're gonna have that. So if I'm driving from Benny Hill and going to West Benny Hill, passing Poor Farm on my right, and now there's no stop sign there.
Yeah.
That person on Benny Hill Road has the right of way. Somebody's gonna come off of Poor Farm Road and they're gonna get teed.
Oh, you do a stoplighting.
I'm just saying, I would not see, that, I think that's a risky take.
And the whole thing is, I can flip that
Right.
and say, how many people are running the stop sign because of?
Right.
The flow of the payment even kind of goes.
And so you do run that risk, whether you have stop signs or not, you always run a risk of getting T-boned in an intersection.
Yeah, but I mean, when you have a stop sign, you can limit that and then also you can have liability, right? Somebody should have the right of way. And if somebody blows a stop sign, that's a no-no, right? We all know that, so then there's liability there. And that liability sometimes keeps people from like, well, I don't want it to go on my insurance or be responsible for an accident, so I'll stop. And it's, so if you don't have any traffic control there at all, it doesn't make any sense to me because if you're gonna just continue straight, why should the person coming off of Poor Farm Road, just like Going Road, have the right of way? So if I come off of Poor Farm, take a left on the Benny Hill, and a car coming down Benny Hill going on, um, to West Benny Hill.
So you don't think it should matter where the main flow of traffic is? It should just matter of?
Well, I think, just in a simple premise, that Benny Hill to West Benny Hill is a straight shot. Well, I think, just in a simple premise, that Benny Hill to West Benny Hill is a straight shot, there is no turning, there's no deviation from the road. There's no, nothing, but when I come off of Poor Farm, I have to make a decision, left or right, and I have to make that turn. And, and, and I'm entering a road that has flow, right? I'm coming to an intersection. I mean, if you, you can't just flow out of an intersection into a T-intersection thinking you have the right of way.
What a road area.
With stoplights.
No.
And these are just. And then the last one was, um, Sean brought up, which was Wheeler Road.
Yeah.
North Road intersection, why does Wheeler Road have the right of way, Wheeler Lock?
Yeah, and you, and I don't know, and the only thing that I've heard people make the argument of the, of that type of scenario is that momentum in the snow. Right, so they're gonna climb out into Lock Road or left or right onto Poor Farm or North Road, they have the momentum coming up that slope. And that's your, maybe the only benefit I see.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I believe it has to do with travel in winter, which is ice and snow and there's a slope there. It's not the only place around here you see it, other towns do that too. One of the most prominent ones is when you go to the hospital and if you go straight across onto Old Street, I think it is.
Yeah.
You come to a.
Or Sand Hill, one of the other.
Sand, the Sand Hill Road, coming up the hill is through and it's a three-way stop.
Correct.
This is a common practice, but I mean, you don't see it everywhere, but I think it works well and I use that intersection all the time.
I mean theoretically, you would think that north to Poor Farm would be a free farm, right? No stop signs, you would think.
Yeah, that's why.
Right, but I think it's, it's probably was thought about about, hey, let's give them the right of way to climb the hill. And either turn left or right or climb into Lock Road, under adverse conditions.
And then the school bus, I think, comes up Wheeler and turns on the Poor Farm as well, so they have the right of way to go.
Okay, oh, so the buses use that.
Yeah, they come down Wheeler Road and then turn on the Poor Farm, yeah.
They will, they'll adjust their routes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's, I know it's a stretch, when you start talking about moving signs.
Yeah.
That it's not, it's immediately gonna be like, wow, what's going on, where's safety, are we throwing everything?
Some people are gonna like it and other people aren't, so you're gonna get, I think, both sides, and I think you have to be ready to feel, you know, questions of why.
And, and the whole point is not to throw.
Right.
Everything out the window and expose everybody to imminent danger and whatever else. But it is to try and always look at things with some level of common sense.
Sure.
And I think Going Road merits that, at least in the other two considerations.
The Going Road one makes the most sense to me, but the Benny, coming off of Poor Farm on a Benny, I think that intersection is structured. With the traffic control devices the way it should be, and that's kind of the control device is a stop sign. And I, and I think it should remain that way.
I actually have something to comment on, the Wheeler Road one too, is living on Poor Farm all my life over there. Um, I really only remember about one accident out of the twenty years that I lived there.
Yeah, we don't get many there.
Yeah, exactly, so.
It's working.
Yeah, exactly, and then, um, I don't know, would it be something to put a yield sign out with the road? So that people coming up there that's new to the area would know that, you know, that, well, I mean, I guess that doesn't, nah, that kinda conflicts with the right of way.
Right.
So that doesn't really.
Yeah, the yield sign's tough too, because it's gonna, if you put a yield sign there, you're gonna put somebody into a braking situation going into the intersection.
Yeah.
Which is gonna stop.
And then that gets the whole rid of excuse of the, yeah, and the adverse credit, so.
Well, I appreciate the input.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So no decision made?
We can pick it up if we want to later.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta take a look at the intersections again, I guess I didn't quite understand what you're talking about at the end of Benny. Like when you, uh, brought it up, so.
Well, it's really evident now that the Poor Farm is the main road because it's very new paving and it's like.
Race track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And West Benny is more of a, well, it's a dirt road.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Well, it's actually paved now.
First part.
All the way up, all the way up to the turnaround.
This thing almost every day. Yes, Poor Farm becomes North Road and it becomes like a threat through the road. But when you look at all the people walking, the lemonade stands, the cookie stands and everything else that appears in this area. By having that three-way stop sign, you have what's called traffic calming, okay, and I think that's very important.
Yeah, you can also look at it as, it, it also slows the traffic, right? So if you have to come to a stop, we get a lot of complaints from Poor Farm Road and North Road about speeders. So if you take the stop signs out, they're just building more momentum, that's my opinion, I don't have any statistical data to, to make that fact. But I could say that if that's those, if those stop signs weren't there, they would probably be going faster.
Possibly, do you have a downside to stop signs?
United Restoration would get rich.
Yeah.
And I remember when Peterborough stuck the stop sign on the road to the hospital.
Sure.
Right, it's just like you're driving and all of a sudden you stop. And there's a big thing in the letters to the newspaper. Then shortly after that, I saw letters of people complaining because the noise from accelerating cars. Is really annoying.
Yeah.
And they didn't used to have that.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a two, two-edged sword with that, using stop signs, and I believe the RSA's at least discourage. Using stop signs to try and slow traffic.
Right, right, so it's intent, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the intent.
Intent is to, uh, safe, uh, stop so you like look and clear the intersection and have safe passage, right? Through the intersection, and, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that when you do have to stop, common sense says you, you have to decelerate, right? And brake and then start again.
And some people like to accelerate really fast, cause they're annoyed that they had to stop.
Right, and I, and I've heard of these incidences, incidences in other towns, you know, where they've done the same thing, they plant a new stop sign, it goes missing. You know, and that usually goes away after about three stop signs, but, you know.
All right, you okay to move on from this?
I am.
All right, thank you. All right, so now, uh, we'll move forward, uh, to our discussion, uh, surrounding four forty-five Turnpike Road. So I asked Debbie to get those letters ready for us that were sent out, um, to Mr. Coffee.
Thanks, Peter.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a good night. And, uh, Mr. Mullerba, so we could look at the, the verbiage. And, um, you had specifically requested that last week, did you have a chance to, to review them?
These two.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance, I just looked at them briefly. And I, and it was pointed out to me that the copy that I had in my briefcase was a rough draft copy, a copy that went out, yeah.
Yeah.
What document are you looking at?
Uh, these two.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. It was on the town news, which letter had one to, uh, Jim Coughey and one to, uh, Steve Mullerba.
Okay.
And I had a, a couple weeks ago, and I don't recall the exact date, but had a phone conversation, uh, with Walker. Barry from the ZBA, um, in his opinion was that it was completely up to us to determine whether or not. There was a zoning issue out there, uh, he saw it. So that's where that sits with us right now, and we should officially respond, uh, to Mr. Coffee.
As well as, uh, Mr. Mullerba.
Yep.
I'm gonna ask the question.
Yes, sir.
So what you got from the ZBA was, they were not the enforcers, you were, you had to make a decision to enforce.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I agree with that.
Well, that's what the law says.
Yeah, that's right.
We understood that, when we, when we.
You're the cops, you're the cops and they're the judge and jury.
Yeah, when we advised him to go to the ZBA, we understood that.
Yeah, I just, they understand, uh, the ordinances, they felt maybe potentially better, cause it seemed like a gray area. Where our code enforcement said that he didn't see any infractions out there, um. I don't see the infraction out there, um, for that business, and so now it's up to, you know.
Let me just follow what you said, you don't see any infractions for that business. Those infractions could be what he's doing to the topography, what he's doing here, what he's doing there, but the fact of the matter is, he just used the word business. If you bring a business to a particular location, you may very well need a special exception. If it's, unless it's something that's accepted in the zoning.
So we have two zoning board members in the room. I don't know if they're at the meeting, but I wouldn't mind hearing their, their opinions on what they heard. Because that was really our hope, was to get a feel, because it's been in dispute and it's been for how many years?
Eleven. I've been going in here for eleven years, just eleven years to get a written decision. And the decision was, in my, my mind, was sending off the, the decision to the ZBA, I mean, it was. And I guess the only comment I have to make is, where would I go from here? One place that's been suggested to me is I could go for a writ of mandamus. Which would be to go to Superior Court and ask the court to order the selection of the wish which to enforce zoning laws. That can be done, it's very easy, it's relatively inexpensive, you just gotta prove the amount enforcing the zoning laws. Which I don't think would be too hard to do, I mean, if we wait, I mean, I'm telling that we, we issued a building permit. For something that was a, a commercial structure, okay? And that, that by, by doing that, that would make it okay to have a business there, like, that doesn't work. I think for people that wanna have a business somewhere, they need to know that they have to do certain things. And it has to be proactive, it doesn't have to be mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, a hammer, a ball peen hammer going after somebody. I mean, but they need to know when they are looking at a piece of property and they're thinking of putting something there, could it be done? Most major businesses or most businesses that are properly run will do that. It's the individual. You know, the one or two people running a business or something and they're gonna just pop this thing in the neighborhood, okay? That's the ones that I think need the most help. This guy at four forty-five should have known before he bought the property, he needed a, a special exception. There's no doubt in my mind, he needs a special exception, I'm not saying he should or should not get one, I'm saying he needed to go get one.
And the ZBA.
And a writ of mandamus, I think, would be easy in, in those circumstances to go.
Cause in my mind, he's not conducting business there, he just has a business, he receives mail there, he parks his truck there.
He's bringing tractor trailers on and off the road there. If he had, if he changes the use of that property, he needs to go to the state and get a driveway permit. Do you know that? Your change of use on, on a state road requires a change of driveway permit.
But if he's parking his, from my understanding, he parks his eighteen wheeler there on Friday. Leaves it there on the weekend and then drives back to Pennsylvania on Monday for the whole week, he doesn't go back and forth. And he has a couple of additional storage trailers that he has on his property.
Well, they're saying that's not true, but so what?
But is that running a business out of your house?
Is so what?
That's my question, I'm just asking.
He's located his business there, why, why do you fill that with the state of New Hampshire?
Could I ask the zoning board members to? Do they?
You don't have to weigh in if you don't.
No, you don't have.
Form, um, you're just definitely on the spot, um, but if you feel that you can and, you know, it wouldn't be any type of conflict. You know, we appreciate, uh, your, both your inputs.
As far as I remember, we asked him if he was conducting, if he was running a business out of there and he said no. Um, and I think we told him that if he was going to, he needed to go through the proper channels with the zoning board. That was that, but.
And I'll second, that's what, exactly what happened, um, during the meeting.
Tim?
Uh, I was at the meeting, um, and I remember that Walker Ferry read the what's permitted in the Rome District. And he asked the landowner, is that one of your businesses? He said, no, and then Walker Ferry said, well, you need to fill out the form. The landowner said, well, then fine, I'm gonna register my business somewhere else, I'm gonna park somewhere else, got very emotional and he said, no, I'd like you to fill out the form. And our understanding was that he was gonna start working with the town to do a site plan review. He scheduled a date to come in, and that's the understanding that we had. And it was pretty clear, you know, just follow the process, you're not one of these four in the regulations and you'll just follow the process through.
So was Mr. Mullerba invited to this meeting tonight?
No.
He wasn't?
To date, he is not, the last thing he was, was last Monday, he had not scheduled a meeting. An application for that application.
He did go before the ZBA, which is what we were looking for, like in our letter to him.
Yes, he did, he did go.
Yeah, yeah, but he was here, I was here.
But if he said he's not running a business, what does he have to go before?
What's he doing there? I mean, this is not.
He has a business, but he's not running the business out of that property, he parks his vehicle there, I'm not sure.
I think the devil with you, I think if you got in a courtroom, I think you'd find that the courtroom probably blew, it's got a business going.
So he has people coming and going?
No, doesn't have to have people coming and going, he's got a truck coming and going, he may be doing bookings.
Twice a week.
What about all the construction guys that bring their work trucks home every night?
Right.
And have equipment in their yards, like, or whatever, you know?
Same thing.
And would, we'd be running a business out of, or we'd be considering running a business out of our own.
Right.
So you gotta Earl first.
Yeah, well, first of all, I was wondering what the actual topic is for this section of the meeting. And then, uh, whether you answer that or not, I'm, I'm the butter, I think I'm the, well, I'm one of the butters for that property. And I'm used to living on property and respecting it. I don't feel he has respect for that property, and I don't, is this the time for me to pin? Cause I really feel like it, because I can tell you right here, I'm standing, my pin, the pin of my land is right there. And a foot away, there's dirt, and if I look over there, and I don't even, there go to the edge. There's a drop-off that goes probably twenty feet down, if I went crawling around, I'd be inundated with sand. I don't know, that's not the right word, but I'd be dead.
You'd be buried.
What?
You'd be buried in the mud and the sand.
Thank you for that, in final, in final memory. But, I mean, what gives? I mean, I had, I had a discussion with him years ago. He said, well, in New Hampshire, you can live for your die, I could do whatever I want, you know, roughly he had said that. Sure, you can do what you want, but if you're gonna put me and my family or whoever, my property, whoever lives after me in danger. Or falling down a, a slope and getting buried with sand, something's wrong, something, it doesn't seem right to me. And that's troubling me, and I, and I'm willing to work with him. And that's troubling me and I, and I'm willing to work with him. My next ques, my next question I have for myself is that, what happens in the, in the spring when the slope has slipped? And the property line is, it's still there, but it's not where, where it was before in my ground. It's, look, is it true that all the boundary lines go to the center of the earth? Is that, what, don't laugh.
I'm not laughing, I don't know, I, that's all, I'm not sure.
I have the belief that if you put a pin in the ground and you say, I own the land up to that pin, it goes to the center of the earth. And if somebody's gonna come along ten feet away and start digging, 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 and I'm not, I don't know what he's doing. And I've asked that question ever since I've met up with the guy. And to me, it's, it's idiotic, I don't know why he's doing it, I don't know the purpose of, of, of the digging. He was selling, he didn't sell gravel, well, there's no gravel in the slope, it's all hay, clay. Yeah, so he can say he's not selling gravel, but he's moving the material somewhere. And, and a remedy for me would be if that, if there's a slope there in the spring and I'm still living, I'm gonna say, okay, you can just reconstitute the area and, you know, bring, bring the boundary line to where it should be. Cause I still have the boundary line to the center of the earth. And that's an injustice to me. Thank you very much.
Before, let me just pipe in. Um, one of the things that he, we had our code enforcement officer go over there and that he was going to be putting in a, um, precast concrete wall where that.
I heard that before.
Twenty years ago.
I think you bring a comment on that. That might be fine, that might, maybe we're holding him back or not. But there's also laws and I'm not sure, and I'm not familiar with them, but there are laws, state laws, that can't, that address hazardous exhumation. I'm more, most of the ones for cellar holes, you can't dig, you can't put a foundation and just leave the thing open, you know?
Well, to cut you short, the DES is on top of that right now. All right, cause it's been turned over to them and that's why code enforcement office has been involved with it. So we have to see what happens there. Now, the other part that I had was that, um, and my being fairly new to the ZBA and kind of going through all the rules, some of them are kind of fuzzy. But he registered the business as being on that property. And his business license gives that property address as his place of business. So that dictates that whether he's just parking a truck there or not, there is a business being run out of there.
Along with a lot of the construction companies and other, uh, construction companies, you know, there's.
People.
I, I don't know about other, I said.
Just knowing companies, just.
A sole proprietor, somebody who is just in business themselves, when you register with the state of New Hampshire, you have to put a physical address on that, you can't put a P O box, so.
True.
Everybody puts their home address.
Okay.
There's a difference between bringing home a pickup truck with some carpentry tools in it or a plowing truck and moving tractor trailers around, there's a big difference.
There are tons of eighteen wheelers parked in this town in people's yards.
There's junk all over.
Because they're tractors.
Tim had his hand up and was.
I know, a half an hour ago, sorry, Tim, go.
So the, the agenda's four forty-five turnpike. And I've heard the whole thing, I've had my own business registered where I've lived. I don't, I'd like to know personally, just out of curiosity, what are the RSAs that define a business? I don't know, I imagine that somewhere there's a law that says so. Um, I'm in a butter. I've had conversations with, I think, all three select people, we've walked my property. Based on the things that we, we've had conversations, like, you know, it's, it looks like cease and desist may be reasonable because, because I work at home. I don't know when he's gonna be drun, running equipment, I'm not sure what the purpose is. Is he preparing material for transport? He's said a few things, he's said something to start on the ZBA. And there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of activity, there's chainsaws, there's excavation, there's allegedly he's gonna be improving it. My dad's concerned about safety, same thing. Lot of children, lot of people can use our properties, you don't necessarily see a boundary if somebody falls. I see children down there, I see him seemingly inappropriate use of his equipment, like shut things down, the fire department showed up, it was a big fire. Questions about the, the brook. So part of what I was hopeful about with the site plan review, and I really appreciate Mr. Ferry, Chair Ferry's approach. Are you one of these four things? No. Are you registered as a business? Yes, and it was kind of disputed. Okay, great, so if you can just follow the process, ask for an exception, we can inspect what the nature of the business is and we're done. I don't wanna cause a stir, I don't, I'm somero, right? We have all these trades from any crafts, but I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. Right, and I don't know how this would be a precedent to influence that anyway, I'd just like to be considered for the four forty-five. What is the nature of the business? Cause maybe it isn't just park the truck, but I see a lot more activity day to day.
One last question. If I understand the board correctly, the board has no intent of enforcing laws pertaining to the businesses in certain, you know, getting a site, a special exception for a business. You know, unless maybe you have fifty people going in for scones or something, okay? But if somebody puts a business on their property, you're just gonna leave it alone.
No.
Huh?
No.
But that's what it sounds like, that's where you come across us.
That's your interpretation. And you've been.
I'll say it this way, and I can't speak for the board, I can speak for myself, that, um, when it comes to, uh, freedom, right? Live free or die.
Live free.
Live free or die. But one of the main principles of liberty is property ownership. Without property ownership, we don't really get to experience freedom. We do to some degree, but not fully. When a person owns their property, they can have their domain. Do you understand what I'm saying? And I'm talking, I'm not talking about four forty-five turnpike, I'm talking about an outlook on these types of things. And so when it comes to me that you need to issue an executive order telling this person that they cannot do this, I will approach it with utmost caution. Because to go around or telling them even, you know, what they can or cannot do on their property is a serious thing.
That's why we have ordinances.
There are ordinances, what did we hear?
Can I make a statement?
And, and so there's, there's different opinions on whether or not that constitutes a business. And then you hear, and it's true, what you guys bring up is a true point. You don't wanna go after everybody in town because you know there's a lot of sole proprietors. But, so we're left at this table, um, pretty much, somebody comes in and says, you guys are lawless, you need to enforce the law, you're right, we do. Absolutely, that's part of our job. I think most people would prefer that we wait until someone complains. Because there are so many ordinances and so many laws that a, a big group of our population would be subject to cease and desist. And so I, I'm not saying we don't care about ordinances. And I know that when the, when the emotions are high, that's what it seems like. But when you sit in this chair, this is what we're faced with. Get a court order that will sick us on every violation in town? I don't think the people want that, and I don't think you do.
I'm not saying after your court order to sick you on every violation.
Why would that court order do that? You referred to earlier.
First of all, the ordinance that requires a special exception does not say you can't absolutely do it. It gives you a way of doing it, a special exception is a way of circumventing the zoning answer. Some reasonable people look at it and see what you're doing, that's what it does, okay? It allows something to happen that otherwise wouldn't happen, and that's what the special exception is for. You're doing a disservice to somebody if you only do it when there's a complaint.
How do you know if it is not a complaint? I'm sorry.
But, but when you say that, are you saying it would be a service for us to go through town and issue cease and desist orders to every suspected business in town? Should we?
And a lot of people who have pickup trucks in their yard and they, they are self-employed are fine.
Why? Why are they fine?
Because you gotta, the most free, you read, read the zoning, go read the zoning, that's all I'm saying.
And that was what I was asking the zoning board members, like, I don't know.
How many of them have read the every zoning ordinance?
Well, how many?
The zoning board can't schedule a meeting, right? According to the newspaper. And ironically, a bunch of people in Bank Village complain and you issue a cease and desist.
But we don't issue cease, you just said that this board doesn't.
You issue a cease and desist.
We did.
Okay, you did.
Yeah.
People who live near an abutting property of the complaint in Bank Village, and it's an abutting property, okay? They complain and you seemingly come up with every excuse in the book not to make the person go to the ZBA. Now, if you send him to the ZBA and he doesn't need a special exception, they can tell him that. Or they can expedite something, there's a lot of things they can do, you're not letting the process work.
So I would, I would suggest to you that this has been in, in the works for eleven years. And this board, composed of us three, I'm on my last year of my term, Lou's new and Sean's starting his second term. So it's not this board that has kicked it for eleven years, we've addressed it. And we sent them in to the ZBA.
Your forward chair.
That's not enough because, I don't know, but anyways, that, we have addressed it.
Jenny?
Well, I just wanna say that I have a friend who had a problem with their driveway with water drainage. And they were given a number to call and the number was four fifty-four or whatever that number is on that. He came with a pile of sand and did whatever with his machines to fix that driveway and there was no water. So if he's saying he's not running a business, how is he doing that? All the sand came out of his yard. I, I just don't understand how he can have piles of sand here and logs over there and tires over here and is digging the ground away and say he's not running some kind of a business, cause he is running a business. Obviously, that's for you guys to find out.
Daniel first.
Oh, no, he had his hand up well before me, yes, yeah. So go ahead.
I can keep a track of them a little bit.
I can hold these thoughts.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so two thoughts. One is, I'm in a butter for Silverstone Prime Roofing in four forty-five. I have not complained about prime roofing, when they came and followed the process, I challenged the owner. I asked him concern about noise and I'm not sure who was in the room, but he addressed all my concerns and I complimented him. He started with the process, there was some title problems, he had to work with the state many years, et cetera. He followed the process, right? Commending, no complaints from me, I don't like it, who cares, right? Silverstone, I'm in a butter. I don't understand it necessarily, I don't like the fact that there's uncontrolled traffic flow, I have a responsibility in the planning board, I've had to serve in that capacity for the town. And my only complaint, but I'm not complaining to you guys, is that was an egregious waste of time. We should, we could have and should have put time somewhere else as a town, right? This guy, I have complained, I've written, I think you guys may have written some of my writing, my concerns, ecological concerns, I think there's damage for whatever he's doing and it's a business, right? He's admitted that, so that's one point. So I am complaining to try to trigger the conversation, that's my job, my, my part. Second point, because of the lack of process, because we haven't, they haven't followed all the paperwork in the site plan, we've seen site plans in the planning board, right? It's pretty likely to get an exception and go through that. It's unknown what this guy's doing if we're, if it were just to pass. And so all of a sudden, because I watch the activity and if this retaining wall becomes, well, it was a barn, but now it's actually a, a two garage bay, without all of the things that a site plan would do, which is like an oil recovery, it's not gonna leak into the brook, this could potentially be permitting continued uncontrolled behavior and fall into future problems. So all I'm asking is that, just as what I've understood at the zoning board meeting, just follow the process. Come in, get the rubber stamp in front of the ZBA, you get an exception. The rubber stamp.
I'm kinda confused because you guys said, he said he wasn't running a business, but you said he was. He said he was.
He admitted during the meeting that he is registered there.
Right.
He got upset. He said, well, fine, I can go register my business somewhere else and rent someplace so I can park my truck. And then the zoning board said, our regulations say, are you this, this, this or this? And he said, no.
Right.
Then following the process is the next step in order to apply for an exception.
But if it, I don't know. I guess, I'm zipping. When we asked, are you running a business and he said no, I think it's because in his eyes, parking his truck there is not considered running a business.
Right, and I don't know, I don't, that's why I referred, I don't wanna make it all, but the RSAs, I imagine, are gonna define what a business is, right? More than just a sole proprietorship.
Yeah, and, and I hear you on process and, and to Jim. Like, if somebody does that, if they go through the process, it does help themselves against neighbors coming later and saying, we don't like a business there. It's like, oh, too bad, the zoning board said they can have one and it, it, it limits this kind of stuff. So I understand that principle and I encourage it. That if somebody's running a business, go to the zoning board, get your variance. Problem is zoning board comes in, um, you know, and people raised in this town, their parents didn't know about the zoning board and they don't really pass that information on and a lot of people don't know.
Ordinants people to town, yeah.
So there are times when there's noise, I can't sleep in the summertime, I'm chief, somero, windows are open and I hear noise and it's persistent and it's the guy's truck and a refrigeration compressor going on and off and on and off. So I've been guided from many people, even in this room, that's a civil matter, call the cops, measure the noise. And I imagine that, I imagine that this guy with his trailer truck, hey, your, your noises, your truck is noisy, you gotta shut it off. No, I'm gonna lose money, it's affecting my business. Right, so I think that the business thing is an actual concern. Because he will occasionally park his truck and idle it all night long, compressor, whatever the noise is.
Cause it's refrigerated goods inside it?
Potentially, and that's part of why I'm.
Then he's sawing out of the back of the truck.
Yeah, the chicken, yeah, that guy's a really peculiar guy, I didn't remember the chicken thing, but.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear about the chicken, I didn't hear about the chicken.
But it is, but it, but there is a noise ordinance.
There is.
Yep.
And that relates to business and prime roofing, priming. And prime roofing, priming example, I mean, he said there's not going to be noise to him. I understand you were conversations in your house. He walked through my property, listened. Like, he was very respectful.
Jim.
Jim Schultz, years ago, issued a cease and desist. It may have been mismailed or something like that. There was a copy sent to the town's attorney and a letter with it. The copies I have don't have dates on them and they're unsigned, but they just came out of the computer.
So do we know if they were actually sent?
Well, my idea was, and I did ask for this, I did ask for it in the right to know, a copy of the return from the attorney because it was sent to the town's attorney. I realize that's privileged, but it's not privileged forever, as we all know. Okay, so my question is, did you ever get anything back? And if you can't find it, why not call the attorney up?
I did call, and he, I called twice, actually, and he never called me back.
He never called you back?
No, I did call though, twice. One when you, I thought you were sitting in my office when I called him.
But we should be able to get a hold of that law firm and see if they have something. And so my, my, the second part of my question is, have you ever gotten unbiased opinion from your attorney which would include things like court cases? In other words, this isn't the first time something like this has happened somewhere. These things happen all the time, okay? And what, what, what is the, what is generally, how do the courts rule on certain things? And, you know, case law. So that might educate you. And I don't know if you ever, have you ever gone and sought any kind of legal counsel on this subject?
Not on this address, no.
So the answer is no.
Correct. Other than?
I suggest you do.
In twenty thirteen?
Yeah, I suggest you do because you see legal address on the other, the, the tea party? You must have a lawyer on that.
We didn't have a choice.
You have a lawyer on that.
We didn't have a choice.
But that, that particular business had people coming and going.
I'm saying, I'm saying...
I don't want to be anywhere close to discussing any of that.
I know, I'm just...
I used to ask if you have a lawyer. You do have a lawyer for that, to advise you, and to advise any other board that's related to it, okay? But that makes sense. Not that the lawyer should tell you what you should or should not feel or relieve or do, but the lawyer can tell you maybe what other people have done in a similar situation and how it's worked out, and that can help guide you.
It's really difficult to get...
I would love to get rid of that name.
Unbiased opinion, like, from an attorney, because the attorney is going to look at it from whatever perspective we frame the questions in, and what we're looking to do, potentially. You know, because when you ask a question, you inherently ask it from the perspective of what your opinion is. So it's...
We all do.
And that, that's why this is one of those scenarios that can be argued either way. And it, right now, we're siding, not siding with, but we're just erring on the side of the property owner. And not going to be taking any action at this point, you know, in regards to that property.
That's not quite what your letter said that you wrote to me.
That's exactly what it said.
Well, you have that letter there?
Yep.
Basically, you say you'll take a look at it after he goes. I forget the words, I don't know what it was. But it says, I got the impression you would do something.
Based on verbal conversation with the code enforcement officer and ZBA chair, the board of selectmen will send a certified letter to Mr. Malerba, giving him thirty days to meet with the ZBA to see if he needs to apply for a special exception to run his business. If there is no response, other actions will be explored.
I told him, you're the option.
Yeah, and there, so he did meet with the ZBA.
I went to that meeting. I came away thinking that the ZBA said he had to apply.
That's what I heard.
I heard that from your, your former chairman, who basically for years wanted nothing to do with this, and he made it clear that he had to apply.
I'm waiting on the application personally. I wanted to go through the process, be able to have a conversation like you did with Brian. But if that's somehow just dissolved, it's a surprise.
Well, I don't know if it's dissolved or not, and I don't know if we've officially voted on what action the board is going to take on this.
Well, we also got a letter from Walker, right?
No, like, phone conversation.
Phone conversation, okay.
Was that in the, was there minutes, or was it just some? It was just a conversation.
So we haven't voted on what this means, other actions to be explored. We have, probably each member has their own thoughts, what that might mean.
Well, I think we'd like to have you take a vote on what you're gonna do at some point in time.
I need to bone up, like, for myself, I'd like to, I guess, read the ZBA minutes from that meeting to get, you know, more clarity on exactly, you know, how the conversation went and just be able to see it, because there's, you know, two different perspectives, like, even just in this room, so... Just small, my memory can't quit, but there was discussion, it was Columbus Day. He was available on Monday. He couldn't do it Columbus Day because the town office was closed. It was Monday was a great day because it worked with his schedule, his business schedule, or travel schedule. And it was going to be the following Monday. So my understanding is he was gonna be here on the following, which would be the seventeenth of October. And I thought this was more of an update on the, on the site plan. Okay. All right. Just have to look further into it and, you know, get those minutes and see.
I'll send you guys all the ZBA minutes.
Did we ever hear any, anything more after that?
Nothing's come across, no.
Okay.
Have they publicly posted on the internet? On a webpage, yeah.
Yep.
And I have a look, yeah, I can certainly look. Okay, yeah, so we'll come back to this in two weeks. Well, December fifth. Can't believe I just said December.
I mean, the hardest part for something like you who made a complaint eleven years ago was never getting a firm decision, okay? It was like trying to grab a grease pig. Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't work, okay?
Time.
Six.
You, you were a selectman for a while, so I'm curious.
For a while?
I'm curious. I laid out what my philosophy on cease and desist orders versus property rights, ordinances, and all of that. So what would your, what was your philosophy, if you don't mind? Like, how did you police the town?
I mean, you police, we didn't go out looking for trouble, okay? Let's start with that, okay?
That's similar to what I said.
But we did go after things like Vic's bug shop, which had countless VWs thrown into a ravine, okay? Which we rented an airplane and put the police chief in the airplane with a camera, took pictures, and took a photo of the judge in Beadborough, who came out of his chair and told him those things were gone.
Who paid for that?
Huh?
Who paid for that?
The town.
Plane trip?
Well, it wasn't that expensive. We're talking a flight out of Jaffrey, come on. This, 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 this wasn't...
Tax bill was at work.
This wasn't one of the green squad going to a meeting in Europe for, okay? A big jet, this was a, like a Cessna, okay?
Yeah.
And so when we saw, when we saw things, you know, we did go after, we did go after excessive junk cars. And sometimes we were, we were successful in that explaining to people what the law was. We also told people if they had a barn and they had three junk cars in the barn and you're only allowed two in the property, we weren't gonna go look in your barn, okay?
But how do you justify that? How do you justify that?
Easy.
But now, but then when somebody like this comes to you, how do you answer them and say?
If somebody came with a complaint, you would look into it, okay?
Yep.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't invade people's privacy, okay? If you know what I mean. And as far as, you know, the self-employed person, and I got neighbors that are self-employed. Okay, well, I got some that are more than self-employed, but anyway. But, you know, I know one, they're self-employed. He has a house and a pickup truck. So what, okay? That's not running a business that changes the neighborhood. And that's what they're getting at, okay?
Is that how the law is working?
I care about people's property rights, up to the point where they significantly detract from the abutters' rights, the neighbors' rights, okay? There's gotta be a balance.
There has to be, I agree, yeah.
And I'm not saying this guy shouldn't be allowed to operate from there with some constraints. I'm saying the system is there to do it. As far as whether or not he's running a business, I think that argument doesn't, doesn't, doesn't hold up that he's not running a business, especially if he's selling frozen chickens out of the back of the truck. I agree with that.
I never heard that.
That was a joke.
I thought it was a joke. Is that, that's real?
I don't know.
It could have been, like, two thousand ten. I mean, the guy's always, I don't know.
Anyways, you see, you know what I'm talking about then. It sounds to me like you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I've been involved in other towns where the ZBA sued the selectman. And the selectman sued the ZBA.
Nice, five years.
I have, I have a, I want to say it's a true life, uh, example of what might happen on my property is that if, um, I have a certain water level in the area, water table, and I have a well. So do I have any right to make a claim against my neighbor? He's the one that's taking away all the water out of the, out of the, out of the terrain in the area?
Yes, you do.
I do? Okay, so then I can, I'll sleep there. Well, that's another...
Well, that's a very interesting thing because I know that happened in my neighborhood.
Well, I, and I...
My brother's well went dry when the neigh, when someone drilled a different well and...
And I specifically talked to him about it, and he said, "Oh, live free, die."
So on that same topic, there's where wetlands never used to be. My dad grew up there. My grandfather owned it. There's wetlands now because of all of this stuff. My hope is that it's some kind of, like, an engineered plan and because it's a business, is also convenient for the communication aspect for, like, a plan, an engineered plan. We've seen site plans come before the town, so that there is an opportunity to talk about the water runoff and the erosion control and whatnot. It, it's part of what a commercial responsibility is, so...
So are we gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna vote yes or no on a cease and desist on December fifth? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, exactly. That would be the last piece for me, is look at the ZBA. Yeah, to have a few questions for our attorney and go from there.
I'm just curious, like, the, is the, is this the issue or the excavation, the land part of it? Like, what's, what's the...
What you're asking.
Well, there's multiple problems. So I, my land is damaged, and I have to decide whether I forgive him or do a civil thing. He, he messed up my land. I can't even walk down to my brook. I can't even walk. I gotta put my boots on.
So if it's...
You're above him?
I am, but that's one. The second thing is, is that's also damaged the town because that is causing wetlands on the perimeter of where Tim Jones' fields are. And it backs it all the way up, and I've seen the impact of what happened.
So if it's affecting the waterways, I mean, that's beyond, like, isn't that...
DES?
Yeah.
I went to DES, I've called them many times, tried to be responsible, and, and they say it's too small, it's below the fifty thousand foot, and basically stop annoying us and don't call back. It's kind of the attitude I've gotten letters from the DES.
But have you had somebody certify that the excavation that he's done has impacted the water table in the whole neighborhood?
No.
And that's a question, so then it comes...
The reason is, is that why would somebody else's activity cause me to pay for that? Is a question that I have.
Well, no, but on what do you base it? You're basing it on, on observation, right?
I can't walk to my brook.
If you have wetlands here and you excavate them, and you don't have any wetlands there anymore. He's, they're gone. He took them.
So then you're saying that that made the wetlands move up onto your property?
He did.
Is that what you're saying?
He took away the wetland.
So there used to be marsh. I think grandpa used to dig shallow wells for, down in the ravine. Took the hill, replaced it, okay? That's all that I can tell you. That's what I've seen. After all of that activity in conjunction, I can't walk down anymore. I've got, I got reeds and cattails coming up on my property. So now I'm confronted with a, a property value change because now I have wetlands that I didn't have before. The vegetation is evidence. That's all what I got. And I also see that type of evidence that's going up the hill, which I've walked for ten, fifteen, twenty years since I've owned the property.
Has any one from the conservation commission been out there?
I don't believe so. And, but the second point is, is that because of the incessant noise and the activity and every weekend and when there's a spare minute, the question that I have is, okay, great. It's not like one of the quiet people who have a truck and park it and talk to their neighbors and have conversation and say, you know, "I'm like, sorry about this. I'm gonna have to run my truck one night." There's nothing like that. And so the question about the business is, what is that? Reluctance, he's, I think he's yelled at dad before. He's kind of, you know, I watched his behavior here. It's like, he's a hard guy to talk to, right? It's not just like a calm conversation. So that, that was the second thing. And that's why the business, it seemed really, in my mind, like I really like what Walker said, is just file for it, give you an exception or follow the site plan.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do the, do a map of the whole property, and then you declare your intent. I am gonna put a garage there. I am gonna change the oil. Then we can make sure that the brook is protected. It, it just seems like it's the right path to go, so...
He does maintenance on his trucks there. That's part of the business.
He has, because his truck has been broken, so I'm hearing the welders and the cutters, and he's putting it all back together again on the weekends, so...
I don't want to spy on him.
I don't want to say anything.
I'm a little worried, isn't it? It's like, the excess is that he, I'm too frustrated.
Thank you.
So we're gonna come back on this.
Thank you.
And here you're voting whether or not a cease and desist order should be, should be issued.
Yes.
Or what should be done, in general.
Oh.
There isn't much else you can vote on. Either you have a cease and desist order or you don't. But you can't say...
Well, yeah, that's where we're at.
We voted to go have a, have tea with him as soon as the other place opens, or we can have tea with him.
Thank you guys for keeping the conversation rolling. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Goodnight, Tim.
Goodnight, Jim.
Thank you.
Goodnight, Jim.
Hi. Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
By my name is Earl. I didn't.
You didn't even know what exciting things were on the rest of the agenda.
My name is Earl. My name is Earl.
That's what I said. By my name is Earl.
Oh, you call, respectfully, you do.
Yeah, like I do every time I see you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Do we have anything else?
We got a roundtable. I saw you on seriously writing this.
The topic on the roundtable was stop signs. We've already discussed that.
We started to.
Yep, so...
So, sew buttons.
These, uh, these last few weeks have exposed us to very challenging issues on the select board. And it is, it's, it's captured in that, is trying to find that balance. Because there is a balance to be, well, somehow found.
What's difficult is that a lot of these things are up for interpretation to some degree or another, and that's why everything's always argued, and that there is even a ZBA and all the other court, uh, systems, so... I don't know, and even, like...
Well, you know, when I got my FFL... when I got my FFL, they wouldn't issue it to me. And this is for just making gun parts. All right, so I've got a, a machine shop in my basement and I was just making some stuff. And on occasion was selling a gun to, if somebody comes over and asks me to get one for him or whatever. It wasn't, you know, at that point, I was selling two guns a month and that was a lot. The I couldn't get that FFL to do that until I got a special exception from the ZVA.
Interesting.
Because it wasn't on the list of the four types or six types or whatever number of types of business.
What are they for? What are they?
I tend to, I'd have to.
Yeah, I could, yeah, look it up, but we should, you know, look into that, like that for, um.
Because maybe it's not so many as I think it is. You know, of potential violators out there in our little town.
Well, he's been doing a whole lot of renovations to his house also.
That's a separate item.
Well, when I talked to him, he said he was building an addition on his house.
Well, it's mentioned in the letter.
But he hasn't done that either, has he?
It is mentioned in the letter.
Because he's only home on the weekends. He's only home from Friday to Monday. This is what he told me and it's taken forever to get anything done because he's only home on the weekends.
Irrespective of that, that if you're doing a modification like that, you still need to get a building.
Right. Right, he knows that.
That's what I mean. It was mentioned, right?
Yeah, but he didn't wanna get the building permit and then not being able to do it because he was gonna do it in twenty twenty-one or whatever and then everything, the prices were ridiculous, so. Building permits expire after a year, so. He didn't wanna pay for a building permit and then have it expire and not be able to do it.
You're crashing pretty fast, aren't you?
I am, yeah.
And I will say, I, I get the process and I get the protection that adds to a business, right? From hassle from the neighbors. And that being said, I've talked with people who have done it to the letter and they said by the time they finished it, had they known how painful it was gonna be, they would.
How painful and what was it gonna be?
The whole process.
Whole process of what?
ZVA.
ZVA.
Planning board.
Then planning board and everybody telling you, oh, you gotta change this, you gotta change that, you gotta change this, you gotta get.
I never, yeah, I never had to go to the planning board.
Well, this was one person's experience and they're like, I don't think this, it was, it would probably be worth it to just pay a fine if there was such a.
Yeah, considering that the price on the fifty dollars.
Or, but, so that, but I think that was brought up a few weeks ago when we were talking about the housing crisis with the planning board and the planning board said, we need to look at ways of streamlining, streamlining the process for people. So that it's not so painful and we don't have to hire a lawyer to come.
Well, even just to fill out the application, you need, you know, engineering and law degrees and, yeah, that's.
And that's a problem.
Yeah, it's not, um, simple enough, you know, for people just to understand. If you sit down and start reading through it, they just get turned right around and.
And like.
Well, I had to do that for renovations in my house.
Well, like Jim said, even, even the zoning board members don't fully understand all of its rules and we can't expect them to because they're volunteers. You know, it's, it's something.
I mean, I, they even wanted me to draw a map of the whole property and where the house sits and where the septic tank is, where the lead field is and how far from the, from the borders and, and that. It's kind of like, the house has been here for, you know, twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you've already got, and this was just added a deck on the back of the house.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, they already had all those numbers on their tax records.
I don't know if, um, there's much we can talk, but this seems like we should be addressing Pratt Pond Association who came to us last week.
Yeah.
We said we'd get back to them quickly. We had a little bit of email traffic, which I don't know if it has to be private. I wouldn't care if it was discussed here even. Just on.
Well, that's a public meeting anyway, so.
Kind of, it was last week, yeah. But really.
Has, um, Gary been out there to take a look at it?
Yeah, prior to this, like prior to him coming in, he was out there.
Oh, was he?
Yeah. Um, I guess if we were to stay true to form, the next action from us would be to ask that person to come in, right, that property owner. That's what we've done previously is engage the property owners.
Joe was being served today. Joe in the Pratt Pond Association being served today. Because that person is suing him.
Now, has Gary talked with the owner?
I'm not sure. I haven't touched base with him directly about that.
From what I, from what I've seen on there, it's, it seems like we would have to do a cease and desist based on the wetlands violation. That it's, it's just, there's nothing.
And no driveway permit.
Reason in my mind to ignore a blatant.
Well, that and digging into the dam.
And no driveway permit.
Well, that one there, you've, that's what my email was all about.
They never responded to the second question, which is.
About it. Which brings me to another topic, which I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna go right now, but, but and be that whatever it is with the driveway permit on a privately owned property, that's something. Every town does, well, not everybody, a lot of towns do, which doesn't justify it in my mind because I think, you know, like Kofol, Representative Kofol said, don't trust that to be the precedent for law. A lot of things are done not quite right.
Well, the driveway, there are, the planning board's got the driveway regs and basically it's a, and it says it in the state that, on the state things, that even, um.
That's what I was looking for.
A private road.
That's what I was looking for and asking for, but nobody can seem to actually show me that.
I'll show, I'll, I'll get that. You want it for the, for the town?
Not, not the, not the town.
Not the town. Not the planning board.
Like where does the state say it? Like where does the state say?
Because we.
Whatever the town says is what goes.
Okay.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, we operate under the authority of the state, right? We operate under RSA's. We don't operate as a home rule town. We have to follow, so. And what, yeah, whatever authority we have, then we have it. If we don't have it, then we clearly don't have it and that's what I want to see the clear. And I think we clearly do have it with wetlands. And we clearly, I don't know where it would be, but it seems common sense to me. Like if someone builds something on someone else's property, that the town probably has some.
Ordinance on the setbacks.
Right.
Yeah, but at the same time, that would go, it'd be a, a fight between the, the property owners.
Right, if I built a fence on your property, I live next door to you and I put my fence over your property line, you're not gonna go to the town and.
Tell the town to tell them to stop it. Well, that's what we're, we're hearing it though. I mean, that's what people are essentially doing.
No, I think there's more to that civil aspect that people don't understand. Like, and this isn't, and everybody wants to save their, their own money. So then they come here and look for us to get in the mid, the only way that we get into trouble is when we get into the middle of these civil disputes that are going on and take a side essentially, you know, and then hopefully it ends up being the right side, but at the end of the day, it still costs the whole, all of our community members money. You know, like, so they're utilizing their neighbors' money in order to fight out their property, like disagreements, the neighbors, instead of working together. You know, they look to us to do that and then because.
Sometimes, and you have to know that sometimes you try to work together, but it's a two-way street.
Right, well, even the Pratt Pond Association, they said they tried, you know? So I do happen to have a cease and desist in my back pocket if you want me to print it out and sign it.
You have a what?
What?
Where'd that come from? We don't walk around with those in our back pockets, do we?
Well, it's on the computer.
And so Gary's opinion hasn't been fully weighted.
Yeah, all he said was.
He thinks that.
Should, he said, should the DES be called? But.
That's up to them.
Is that them or is that us?
I think that would be them. It might.
Yeah, because that's their, their property.
Right. I mean, all we care about and all that we can enforce is the wetlands setbacks and the driveway permit.
But a cease and desist would say to stop construction of your driveway.
Which he's already done, so.
Which is.
Well, no, the cease and desist would then start the legal fight between the town and that property owner.
Right.
Is what it would do. He was essentially saying that he can't use that driveway either.
Right.
Um, and could say that he needs to bring it all back to the original you know, status or as close as he can get it to that. And if he wants to fight that,
Which he is.
We'll be fighting it, yeah.
Well, he's suing the Pratt Pond Association right now.
Here's the, uh, let's just come back to this next week.
Let's kick that can. Just a little bit down the road.
Give it one more week.
You know, I wouldn't mind doing is, um, authorizing our code enforcement officer to issue that cease and desist. Based on his findings, go out there with a tape measure. Did you, um, the driveway thing, I'd like to wait until Lou gets me the RSA that says.
Has he made that, has Gary made that statement?
He has not.
Yeah.
He hasn't said that he's.
Am I wrong saying the board selectman has to issue a cease and desist?
Right, and I'm saying, like, we have it ready to go
It's ready.
Upon, yeah, but how was it worded? And that's the problem. And I would like the code enforcement officer's input before we actually act on it, but.
Correct.
If we can somehow vote. And I, I would be comfortable with the wetlands pending measurement with the code enforcement officer, which I'd be happy to go out there with him. Is there a way for us to do that? And then we just come in, you know, on some day when Debbie's on vacation and working from home.
I'm sorry, can you, can you?
Stop by my house.
So like if we can just authorize it.
Authorize what?
A cease and desist based on the wetlands violation.
Okay, and.
Cease and desist.
We don't have the code enforcement officers.
He's not here.
I mean, he hasn't measured.
That's right. Pending, and so I'm saying as a board that we, we vote to authorize it.
Okay.
Pending.
So yeah, I would.
Discovery.
For me, I'd rather wait and like ask him to go out and take those measurements or ask him.
He's gotta get, he's gotta get the person's permission to enter the property.
He's got Pratt Pond Association's permission.
What's that? He has.
Half of his driveway is built on the dam. And the Pratt Pond Association owns the dam.
Yeah, so you don't have to go.
So he's not even going on his property.
Okay, but, so that.
So Gary's role, we go to validate what was presented to us, um, last week and that's what we should have asked to, to have been done last week. We lost the week essentially on this.
That's what I'm saying, because we did promise him it would be quick.
Yeah.
We'd get back to him quick. If we could authorize it, I'd be happy to go out with Gary. It's very close to my house.
You're authorized to go out with Gary and take a measurement.
And measure and then draft up at least maybe for the next week's meeting or or even before.
Well, that's why I just want Gary to go out and validate what was presented to us. And then, um, he should have that language, you know, it should be easy enough.
I'll talk to him. You guys are, um, well, this is Thanksgiving weekend.
We don't need, I don't think there's, there's no emergency. Everything's built, everything's done. I don't know why. You know.
So you're, you're all gonna talk to Gary?
I can.
I'll be here next Tuesday. Next Tuesday.
You will or will not?
I will.
With a working phone.
Next Tuesday is
Twenty eight.
A public hearing.
What's my brother's birthday?
Twenty eight.
Yeah.
We have a public hearing, so.
That's a.
And I have jury duty that week.
Next Tuesday we have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For what?
Weight limits on River Road.
Oh, okay. I drove down that and the road sure seems narrow to be taking eighteen wheelers through it.
That's for next week.
Though I did have, um, a question. Like if it was, because we already heard from people on River Road and if there were, if the majority of us wasn't willing to entertain imposing weight limits or any type of restrictions on River Road, would we even need a public hearing? Because the public hearing was for that, like to satisfy that requirement, like to have a public hearing in order to.
To get input from both sides.
Create ordinance.
Was it?
No, it was just to get input from both sides and then make a decision from there, right?
Has it been posted or?
It has been posted. It's in the newspaper.
Okay.
In the website. And Facebook.
All right. So next Tuesday at seven, talk about roads.
Okay.
Gotta keep it to roads.
Yeah.
Weight limits.
Yeah.
Not speed limits.
No. That's for different, uh, problems.
That's a different one, yeah. I, I never knew that North Road had a problem with that. I thought it was just.
North Road had a problem with.
Every other road.
Yeah.
Speed limits?
Speed limits. I think it's a, I think it's probably a common problem throughout.
Mm-hmm, the whole town.
The country.
Yeah.
Because I go down to these other towns and I see people have like seven signs in their front yard, slow down. Children live here, slow down.
The little green alien kid.
Slow down. It's not an uncommon problem. It's not a light matter either, but nevertheless, it's something. We put speed limit signs and then we hire cops and that's all we can really do.
The question that I have.
Or ban vehicles.
When it comes, when, when it comes to that is that, um, if you look at the RSA's, it says that, um, the common speed limit for these types of roads is thirty-five miles an hour.
Mike says thirty. However.
The RSA's say thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I thought.
Yep, and a lot of these roads are, have got these twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs. In order to get that, they have to have permission or the okay from the state to set the speed limit at twenty-five unless it's a playground or a highly dense populated area. And we don't, a lot of the twenty-five mile an hour speed limits are not in the dense populated area.
Which is interesting because in some communities, I think Temple's even one of them, as you go into Temple, I forget what the exact speed limit is, but it's under thirty-five and it says, this is the speed limit of the town per order of the selectmen.
Right.
Like, if you don't see a sign, this is what it is. Like, so you're on notice.
Right, yeah.
Think it may be thirty, yeah.
It's thirty miles an hour and they probably. It's thirty miles an hour and they probably went to the state and got the okay for that. Because, and Hollis does the same thing. They give you a thing saying that the speed limit in this town is thirty miles an hour. They do it right at the town line. And they don't have to put signs up anywhere else.
I feel like we could do things like that on. Our roads, I don't know about having to get permission from the state on our own town roads. But who knows?
It would change.
And that's what's kinda funny about some of these discussions that we've had over the last few weeks. Kinda reasonable at the same time, but then at the same time, I know that the state encourages commerce, encourages growth, you know, like. So some of our local ordinances don't even fit into what the state's view is for the overall state. And has actually taken the sides of businesses and fought against communities. You know, so that, you know, the businesses can do, can conduct themselves in the community. They've sided with um the business.
Well, I think it, it is the free enterprise. Pre-market system has to be promoted.
That's why it'd be good to really look at some of these ordinances to see if they are in line with. Um, the state laws, right?
We look, we actually, we look at the half of it, but we haven't looked to see if there's anything that says. Um, that's modifies that for safety reasons.
Well, there's, there's about the grayest area you can pick. The safety.
It's the one that the feds love.
Safety, okay. I mean, I'm looking at, at River Road and. And I'm driving my pickup truck and to be honest, I probably didn't have more than a foot or two on each side of the uh.
You'll find that, you'll find that in a lot of roads.
Yeah, and you get an eighteen wheeler, which is going to be two or three feet wider than, than my pickup truck, two or four feet. And that means that it's out there and. I'm sure that the mirrors on it are going to be over the, the uh, the yellow blend in between the north and southbound lanes.
Yeah.
All right, where's the safety factor to that?
Yeah, well, these, yeah, all things that we can discuss next week um at that hearing. All right, so I'll move away from uh some of this fun stuff and move on to some other fun, fun stuff in the roundtable. Did you have anything?
Roundtable.
Tonight, Jason?
I have a few.
Oh, great.
She's excited. I have this.
What is that?
You guys remember that? HB three twenty one. Beginning September twenty twenty three, all municipalities are subject to releasing.
Yep.
Non-public. So, that's just a reminder for you guys, I'm not asking us to do it tonight. But it needs to get put on the agenda.
No, we gotta find them.
Yeah.
And they're getting released.
I've asked Jim, I've asked Becky, I've asked um somebody else. If they have any idea where the non-public sealed minutes are from any time before I started in here and nobody knows.
Oh, it's gonna be hard to unseal something you don't have.
Take minutes is my question.
That's a possibility. My other thing is another, just a, a heads up, uh, which you guys all saw. If you had a chance to look at the budget, uh, after the finance advisory committee's work, we're up another three hundred and twenty eight thousand to start. From last year. Just put the bug in the air, that'll be pushing. Close to three quarters of a million dollars in two years of an increase, so we got some work, I believe. To do on that one, so I'm, I'm going through them quick, Debbie.
I love you for that.
Then, oh, I had Turnpike Road. Um, on the warrant article. I do um still wonder if we should have the charities on there. I question the ethic, the ethics of it. Um, and the two charities that I brought up last year, I looked into them. And they still have the same, the same political um flag being flown. And so if you guys aren't willing to take the charities off of the warrant. Um, at some point when we're going through it, you can know that it's going to be a political discussion.
The other one that caught my eye was one of the churches present. And that, you know, even though it's the people voting for it.
That's Saint Vincent de Paul?
De Paul, yeah.
So that's a Catholic church. And my, my thing is, I, I'm sorry, I.
But, you know, there's supposed to be a, a, a division between church and state.
But this is a health related thing and maybe.
Again, and, and maybe, but it doesn't say that there.
It's like a food pantry, but everybody knows.
It may be, but it doesn't say that there.
And so. I had, I had that thought since you wanna engage on it. I would say health wise, and some would argue. We should include a donation to all of the churches in town because they probably do more for health. Than any psychological.
If we're going to do it for.
Agency.
For one, we probably should do it for all. But then there's still gonna be a bunch of people saying that there's a division.
This is, this is my ethic, this is my ethical point.
Because instead of doing them separately, you're looking at them as a bunch, so you know, it's either all or nothing.
And I'm sorry to be a screw. And it happens to come around Christmas time and whatever with it, it's still, I, uh, it troubles me. My last thing was, again, a non-action item, so you'll like it. When the representatives are here, they said they open every meeting with a prayer. What do you guys think of asking pastors from our local area to open our meetings with a prayer?
Very interesting.
Yeah. We have them pray at the memorial day, they do invocations and benedictions. It's not. The US House does it. Although I think they've had some pagan priests of late, but whatever with that. Something to think about, I asked.
Oh, that's where, that's where it'd go is that it would be an all or nothing scenario.
It would have to be any denomination.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm saying we would ask all the churches in this town. And it wouldn't have to be.
Well, we wouldn't have to go. The body of the people of the, like, the town, right? So if somebody wanted to come and give a prayer that didn't. Align with your religious views, you'd have to be okay with that because they live within this community and maybe they have. A church of some sorts that doesn't fit into the model that you necessarily think of church. You know, so it's kinda.
Yeah, no, there is that aspect.
So.
And I, I'd be curious how the house. Handles it. And my suspicion is here that there would be somebody who would want us um probably. Make a mockery of it and come in and do whatever they wanted to do to make a point. But the pastors in town, I guess they'd be willing to come in and say a short prayer and that would be probably most of. What it would be and would it be, I believe it would be very beneficial for us. It would set a tone.
Yeah, we have people that leave over the um. You know, the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, what?
That's there.
We have people, that's there for other.
And that's the thing, we don't really live in like a mob rule society. We live in a republic and there's rules and. And uh, not everybody has to like every rule.
That's true.
So, so ends my uh. Roundtable. Just a bunch of thoughts.
Yeah. Lou. Any discussion for the roundtable portion?
Yeah, the things that we talked about um last week and brought the subject up about um. Were you here last week?
Part, partially, I left at seven, but I did the minutes, so.
You heard the minutes, about um reviewing the outside vendors that we utilize for different things. And see if everybody's happy with them.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Or the IT.
The IT for one, and you know, whatever other outside vendors we have. See if we can either try to cut the expenses on those or get better service or. You know, Sean brought up the idea of um why don't we offer to switch over to a dot gov address?
Because. Um, we pay a year in advance for our license. And Microsoft wouldn't let them out of, let us out of the license until, I think it's March, we paid March to March. So he did mine as a trial. Um, and I think Lisa's is dot gov also. We have a couple of different dot gov, so I, I mind, I get both.
Okay.
The dot org and the dot gov, they both go to the same. Um, but we can't totally switch everything over until, I think he said March.
March.
Is when our year is up. And then there's gonna be this whole migration thing and there's a ton of costs to this apparently, so. Yeah, but that's, that's why we have, cause I ask him all the time, like dude, where's the dot gov, where's the dot gov, what's going on? So finally, he said, he's been trying to get out of a contract with um Microsoft. So we, you have to have Office three sixty five for dot gov, not just Office three sixty five. An outlaw and the whole thing, so. So we can't get out of the contract until then, so that's why, once the contract is up and we have rolled over into the dot gov one. It'll, everything will switch over.
Okay. Thank you. The other part is computers are, I'm looking at the servers that we have in that office over there. And they're pretty old already, pretty outdated.
The server?
The computers you've got.
I thought we had that replaced a couple days ago. I'm not sure though. It may be on the chopping block within the next year or two.
And um.
We have a two year rotate, a five year rotation, so every year we replace two computers.
Okay.
So by the time the next one comes around, it's five years. Um, we just had to replace the um Fortigate. What the heck that is, for the DPW and the police station because they are end of life.
The what?
Fortigate, it's, it's an actual piece of equipment and then there's a maintenance to it also, but um. Excuse me, they're at, at end of life, they can't be renewed or repaired, so. A thousand bucks a piece, so I had to sign IPO and get those ordered.
Okay.
So, I, I do have a question though, so. I didn't know how, I guess this is kinda budget related, but um. Like, so now that Fortigate, is that coming out of the DPW and out of the police or is that coming out of the B O S? Cause he does have computer support, computers stuff on his budget, but uh. I'm not sure that um they do down there. So it's kind of all.
Well, that might be another, like a point to refine.
Actually, I lied. It's police and fire that had, had those two things replaced at nine hundred and ninety eight bucks a piece, the DPW one. This is the last year we can renew it and then it's end of life, so twenty five, we need to replace that one.
Okay, and that um. And what function does, do those computers do?
Uh, I, I don't really know, to be honest with you.
Okay, are they actually maintained by the IT department, the IT people? They are.
Well, they're at, in our buildings, but.
Yeah, no, but.
If anything goes wrong.
They were also, right? Okay, cause I'm wondering, um, you know, you, I kinda got. The ideas that you weren't too happy with our IT department or our IT.
Sometimes and sometimes not, sometimes, like, like when we have an issue, it's usually a. Nine one one, we, we can't, you know, Lisa can't do her job cause she can't connect to the internet, cause you know, something stupid happened. Um, since we had all the rewiring done and everything, that hasn't really happened. So it hasn't, it was just frustrating trying to get in touch with one person. You know what I mean? If something happened and we need an immediate answer. I mean. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem, wouldn't that be a bit, I mean. And I did get.
Contract that we renewed year after year for a long time, right?
So we don't really have a contract, contract, we buy block time.
Yeah.
So.
So again, a vendor that we just year after year by default use.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I wonder.
It's worth looking for something else.
One of the um towns, I think it's Hanover, they're, they just started like their own IT company. Which is kinda cool, so I was thinking of talking to him and seeing. I don't know.
Our own IT department?
No, not our own IT, would you kidding me? We don't have anybody.
Hire somebody who can just.
I'm, I didn't know if they would trap, cause he's farming them out.
Oh, farming them out, alright, yeah, now I get you.
What with the C D and whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm just.
It's just like that lawyer.
Go ahead, Lou, sorry. I, I was just doing all my stuff.
Lawyer thing, where they had, you know, package of doing seven towns or seven.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and they're, and they're hosting that IT person and, yeah. Interesting.
What else you got, Lou?
Could be a scenario that is looked into.
The school has, has their own IT people.
Yeah.
You know, can you piggyback on that?
Uh, that's interesting, and I can't really fully comment on it, but that's, as a part of that budget. Is an area that comes up, um, because they also have people come in like to. You know, deal with the computers, like so they have that same contractor, maybe they buy block time as well. And those IT people don't actually service their own equipment. I'm not sure exactly how that works or runs yet.
They probably do the service on the, on the software and not on the hardware.
Maybe, yeah, but that was questioned uh just this past week. Why that can't take place um as part of those budget discussions, so.
So it's just, you know, like it's a different, I don't know who all the outside vendors are, but you know, it may be worth um. Doing a little research on that, if you can get some of your staff to do that.
Sure.
Alright. Do you have anything else? No. The Warren Arl, Article discussion that keeps getting pushed is very important and we need to complete it. So. What about the fifth for that as well?
We have um the library coming in to discuss their warrant article request on the twenty eighth, I don't know if you wanna kind of piggyback on that. Before the seven o'clock pu- public hearing. I don't have anything else on the schedule for that night.
Yeah.
If you wanna just devote that. If you wanna just devote that to Warren.
Maybe I'll get prepared for that.
I've been prepared for it for four weeks.
I know it's been on the agenda, but.
But we've never gotten to it, so, and I knew we weren't gonna, so I didn't bother putting it.
We could've.
You've already had it in the Dropbox.
Debbie, yes or no, you can be prepared for the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Alright, perfect.
Next week.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure that it was good.
I'll send it out again.
It getting pushed down.
I'll resend the Dropbox link.
That would be helpful.
It getting, it getting, getting taken off the agenda wasn't a function of us, I don't believe, for a couple or a few times.
No, it's just, we just ran out of time, that's all, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just saying.
No, you kicked it, we kicked it.
It was just a not-too-important thing.
Alright, so next week.
I've got, I've got one more thing, can I get you guys to sign off on the paperwork there so I can start signing the checks?
Let me say what?
Hmm.
Oh, it's currently gone, yeah.
She's on vacation.
Yeah.
Oh.
See, this is what I'd have to do, I decided I cannot have a stay occasion, I have to go, have a go-away occasion.
Oh, you can take a, get sick vacation.
Yeah.
Even when I was sick, I was working.
How good did that work?
I was still, I.
She can't stop herself.
I couldn't even have a sick day.
It's like only hospitalized and you should probably still call and.
Right, exactly, I don't know what it is.
Um.
I'm addicted to it, I love it.
Alright, so we'll have that discussion next week.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna be meeting um with the FAC on Monday, so Monday is a double. Meeting night with a public hearing, um.
Monday's a.
What do you mean a double meeting night?
Next week, next week.
Oh, next week, a double.
Yeah, yeah, double meeting, yeah.
Week.
Me.
So, uh, on Monday at five o'clock here, uh. The FAC planning board and us. Yeah, to, yeah, go over where they're at with the CIP stuff.
Does the planning board know about this, like was I supposed to be the one to coordinate this, or I, I'm not sure? I'm pretty sure when I sent out the email, I included Dee and Jen on it.
You have two signatures, you can legally start signing.
Definitely check it.
Thank you.
To make sure.
So I don't know if the whole planning board's planning on coming, or just Dee, or who?
She did bring it up, not at the last meeting, but the meeting prior to the first meeting of November, um.
I'll just send out a confirmation, I think I sent out a invite also, an oval thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Pardon me.
And then, has anybody been in building two in a while?
No.
Funny you should say that, how weird. When I was at the conference last week, I was talking to um Service Master. And they do, they're like, oh, mold and water and blah, 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 and so, they said they do free consultations. And the guy called me yesterday or today, and I said, yeah, well, I said, send me your information. And uh, cause I said, we rented, you know, we leased the building out, so we can't just walk in there at any time. And um, so. I took my, talk to you guys and see if you wanted to even go down that route, or. What was going on about that, but no, I have not been in there.
So the reason I ask is that um, to my knowledge, there wasn't a double check of square footage of what was being utilized. Um, after we had had our last negotiations.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And I've heard that it might have spread out, but I don't know that for myself, so.
What is their contract on it?
They took a ton of stuff out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it an ongoing, but we had an incre- annual increase on it?
Have they paid last night, or they, oh no, they did, they called them.
Don't ask me, I don't.
Never mind, I had to call them and they paid right, right kind of late, so.
I've never heard of a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
They just missed it, to go to new systems or something, so they're awesome.
Okay. Um, but that should be, you know, looked at, like just to verify, you know, how much the building is being occupied. Then also, um, whether or not we want to continue that lease or use that building for our own storage needs. Uh, right now. Um, then maybe flex- more flexibility to conduct different. Yeah, yeah, well, investigations or like in looking at the, the building. You know, what we could potentially do with it or not, cause every day that goes by, nobody's in there. Uh, in my opinion, the building slowly dies, it decays, you know, like, cause with people around, people see things. And things get addressed, but, yeah. So we're just letting that, uh, building head wither away, cause you can see like the brick facade falling on it, yeah.
It, it's on this building too.
Yeah.
One of these days, I'm gonna walk in the back and the whole wall's just gonna fall on my leg. Then I'd be in the hospital and I wouldn't be able to work.
Oh, what I thought was supposed to be. I thought that was supposed to be, be repaired, the wall like two years ago.
Over there, on that wall.
Yeah.
On that one too, that was fixed. That was pulling away.
I thought it was this wall, like outside.
Oh, both sides, but it's crumbling, spreading out.
Yeah. 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 Hopefully an excavator over and dig out the trees and take out the bricks.
Yeah. By brick.
Okay.
How was, how's the internet speed here in?
Much better.
Much better?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what your throughput is?
Um, no, he tested it, but it's. I don't know the numbers and I don't know what they mean, but.
Go, go online and.
Eight hundred four.
Can I pause that Luke, you're still on Warwick Mills here, like when we got off onto bricks and.
Yeah.
I thought you were done.
No, no, not by a long shot. So who's gonna go and uh take a look at that, Mark would be the one to go in and look at this.
Building two?
Yeah.
The space that's being used?
Yeah, yeah. Peter, Mark.
Trying to remember who did it last name.
It would be Mark, he's in charge of building maintenance, right?
Mm-hmm. Then as, you know, and on that topic, if there's other building maintenance needs that we have, um, he would be the one compiling a list, I would think. So that we can judge it for it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we can touch base with him to see if he's done assessments of uh the different town structures. I'm, I'm not saying go out and do full, you know, at least look at the outside and, you know, know any issues that the people that are utilizing the buildings have had with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good to be active.
Yeah.
Active, have plans for.
Yeah.
I would hope either Peter or him would have gotten together and figured that out, because I did.
I don't know, that's what it'd be good, I'm just asking for a double check.
Yeah.
Uh, cause as you know, we've gone through a lot of change again, even in that department, so.
I think since, since I've come on, I think we have all the departments.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think you're right.
The whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New police chief, new, new police chief, new fire chief, new town administrator, new town clerk, new DPW director, who's left?
What's up, John?
Oh.
Treasurer.
Treasurer. Oh, man, that's been quite a ride, has it, Doc?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Wow. Lot of change.
Alright.
Um. And just to let you guys know, um, the school board ABC meetings. Going pretty good, it's a hard-hitting group, um, this year, and it doesn't show any signs of backing down. Uh, we had one kind of junk meeting where we just got information and, you know, it wasn't really a meeting, but uh it's counted as a meeting. Um, and then we opted to have two more, so within the span of a week, there was three. Of those meetings of that advisory budget committee, and next week, uh, we're looking at meeting three times during that week.
I thought you said there was four meetings.
A, a minimum of four.
Oh, you guys are.
Yeah.
Taking the bull by the horns.
Good, like really getting into it, um. And going above and beyond and pushing what the charter is for that group, uh, but the dialogue needs to be there, so. And uh, could get quite interesting, you know, to see what the recommendation from that advisory budget committee is gonna be to the um. School board, cause they wanted to have our recommendation by December fourth. And that's why now we're like even gonna have more meetings, we found out last night that. December fourth, the school board's looking for the recommendations from that budget committee.
And they haven't seen the budget?
Yeah, we have, we just, yeah, the second draft of a budget, so it's still like a fluid document and. Just completely different from how, you know, we view our finance advisory committee.
Crazy.
Yeah. So, it's been interesting and I'm sure it's gonna get a lot more interesting. Um. Yeah, I guess that's all I have for this evening, for updates. Oh, no, I don't, that, that can be also.
I'm glad you did that, because I have to do that too.
That, uh, the committee was looking to utilize a different space other than the SAU, uh, cause there tends to be. They haven't said no to a specific night yet, but at each evening, we're asked to leave or to wrap it up and go. Because other people want to leave when, um. When you wanna look at something in, in a great detail as a group, you need more time to do that. Uh, so I offered the meeting space down below here, so that it's still in a public building at least. And the public can feel free to come in, uh, to it and trying to keep it out of a private business or a private home. Um, so that space is available and I just wanted to check with uh you guys if you had any issues with those meetings being conducted here.
And they're open to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so that will have it in here?
If the room is available, so, uh, next Monday, they're gonna be downstairs at five, cause that's when they would like to meet is at five. And then I'll go down after, um, the presentation from our FAC to us up here. Uh, to work on that, and right now we're looking at Monday, Wednesday, and Friday of next week, but that hasn't been confirmed.
Which, the other two that you could do here.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm, as far as I'm concerned, I don't, nobody's asked me to use it, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I just wanna keep one spot, but, yeah.
Absolutely, I think it's, it's great use of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay.
And I did check with Eric and he said it's fine.
That's what I, you copied me on it and then you were like responding like back and forth, even though you copied me on the email to Eric.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, like a little chuckle for the day.
Oh.
It's not Eric, right, no, that's fine, and then you wrote, checked with Eric and it's good.
Well, you should know, I'm doing my job, right?
Alright.
I have something.
What do you got, and then we'll go back to Jason.
Can I do mine, and then, then you can get your second go, go around?
Yeah, cause then it'll have three items by the time you're done, I'm kidding.
Um, so I have to go to court on December twenty-first, which was the day we decided to have the Christmas party. Um, so I really don't wanna miss it, so I was wondering if it would be okay to move it to the Wednesday, the twentieth. I have to go to court for, for here. It's not a personal thing.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is that right?
I think we had said before that it's whatever you guys come up with for.
Okay, we, we decide, I think we decided we're doing El Prono with the name food.
Ooh, that sounds good.
Okay. I, I guess I need to get on that.
And it's a lunch.
Yeah, eleven-thirty to one-thirty?
Yeah, alright.
December twentieth, you said?
Yeah.
I love this time here, but it also drives me crazy, cause all the days off and the different things that aren't work.
Right?
Starting to get like, feel like a screw, screwy week today.
Are you guys kinda, are you guys anyway? The last few years, nobody's gone to the Christmas party from the select board.
I wasn't there? Well, I remember being here, no, I was probably retiring on other things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, after the look I got when I said, I may or may not, like, yeah, I'll be here.
Well, I mean, you know.
No, I'd like to be, I'm uh, see if I.
Well, sometimes the midday stuff, it, it doesn't look like it's difficult to get to, but if it's like parties and having fun, then it's difficult to get to. If you wanna call it a meeting, ninety percent chance I'll be here.
It's a meeting for apprec- appreciation of your employees.
If it's work, yeah.
Hey, where'd she go?
Took off, she had the one thing and she was gone, yeah, she didn't wanna hear your five points.
That was all she had. She had a whole notebook there, but that's it, one item, Christmas party.
No, and I had that um Service Master thing for building two.
Oh.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you guys wanted to do that or not.
Nope.
No, okay.
Not right now, no.
Just uh. Let sleeping moles lie.
Oh, that's funny.
Alright.
Alright, what'd you got, Jason?
See, I had, I write to myself some notes where I had to say, right, and I had here budget. And so when I got here, I looked at how much our budget, projected budget was looking to be over. That wasn't what I meant, what I meant to myself in this note is I really think we should have the budget committee back on the warrant. And we imagine how much we could get, how many lines we could perambulate if we didn't have the budget.
What's that, to have an official budget committee?
So that the selectmen would.
Yeah.
Hands off. It's, we would be the managers of the budget, they would be the budget makers, from what I understand.
But when you have a budget committee, isn't it, you have the selectmen's budget, you have the budget committee's budget, and then decide which one's gonna go?
Budget committee, budget committee's in charge of the whole thing, so it might have nothing to do with it.
Turns all financial responsibility on them.
I would say there's nothing to do with it, um. But yeah, it's a diminished role.
To the selectmen, and if somebody wants to be a selectman.
I think we should give them a step then.
To, to really get into the budget, they don't have to do, put up with, um, all the other stuff that comes with being a selectman. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And there's a lot.
How did that work last time they had them?
It was ignored and then disregarded and then voted out.
We treat this budget committee, that's not official, um. We give them that level of respect, you know, and allow them to do that work with the department heads and look at that big picture. So.
So again.
We kind of conduct it that way.
Not now, but better set aside some time for that warrant.
Yeah, and on that tone with budgets, um, I'm gonna propose to the um, school board that. One of, one of the selectmen from New York City and Greenville be on that advisory budget committee as a rule.
And that's just. They seek out.
Yeah, like that's the beginning part of it and try to.
Verbally bolted out.
Yeah, yeah, um, I got some information today, cause I asked like how, um, the money's calculated. So I started to go through some of those documents and, um, we're, we're actually supposed to be meeting with the school board in Greenville. So like, are supposed to come up with that and review that periodically, what that ratio is, to make sure that it's working for both communities. And to my knowledge, that has not occurred. Um, and that's like a founding document for the district.
Wow, so how's that?
So do it based on attendance and population?
Yeah, I'll let you know once I get through all of it, yeah.
Like we did the, you know.
Oh, that was a big deal, long time ago? Yeah, that whole thing, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, twenty-five, that thing was a big.
Yeah.
Well, they still have the numbers that come out that how much of the budget comes from Greenville? Well, they still have the numbers that come out that how much of the budget comes from Greenville versus uh.
Right, but.
Oh, yeah, it's a dollar, we don't know how they get to that dollar.
But we don't, we don't look at that agreement and like what, how many kids are being served and all the different things that are factored. And that's, I only got page one. Um, and right where I was starting to get into that, it was like cut like right through the words, like.
Of course.
I was like, I know what that sentence is, and that's like the cool part of the whole thing, you know? Like, I wanna see all of it, like, let's see the whole document and figure out, you know, what we're not doing that. You know, back in one of, you know, nineteen eighty or seventy, like this is what the rules were and. It gets lost, you know, throughout the time.
Because there was two different agreements, right, Mason was at one.
Yeah, so this is the one when after Mason left, yeah, yeah.
Now, that's good stuff.
Because.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, it references the core part of the original agreement and then the part where Mason, you know, leaving, uh, dispersed, yeah.
So that, that does bring a question regarding the school, you sent an email saying that our payment went down.
Yeah.
Does that mean that the school?
From January to June.
Reduced or is keep sending back money or how does this work?
So I'm trying to get clarity on that too, um, and I got a form from one of the, the MS two. Four twenty-four from the school. To see if that reduction is realized like in our tax rate setting, because they were, well, you don't know that. Because you haven't seen their form and.
I, I have access to it.
I know you have access to it, but what I'm looking at is to figure out if that's already been ca- calculated into this tax rate. That reduction, um, or not, and then if not, why?
And then is it gonna go way up again and tie?
Yeah, like to see how everything comes together, this is one of the primary functions of me going there. Was to try to tie together our aspect with their aspect and have an understanding of how we. Um, affect each other and impact our community as a whole, so. Um, yeah, so I just got that before coming into the meeting and haven't been able to track that down yet. But it'd be, it's gonna be interesting to see, cause I wanna make sure that. It's realized by the taxpayers, because if it's, if it wasn't realized in the tax rate setting. And everybody's paying a higher tax rate because of this.
Right.
And we're collecting those dollars, but then we're only paying out or um, yeah, paying out that reduced amount to the school. That would leave us with that one point two million in excess, like real dollars that were collected. That we wouldn't be able to return until making the budget for twenty twenty-six. So it's really kind of a crappy way, you know, like it wouldn't be realized in the tax rate potentially for two years.
But then why do we have to pay that increased rate from July to December? Like two hundred, two hundred thousand plus a month.
Yeah, and so the business administrator explained where that came from last night. And there was um unfi- unfilled positions and the revenues were a little bit higher. And then also not having to pay out all the um. Benefits to those people that weren't in the positions is where they got to that number. But why that assessment was done. In August, September, cause I believe the school board voted to return the money back to the taxpayers in September.
Did they really?
Yeah. So that's. But then it's on, it, if it's on that four twenty-four, then that was taken into account when the tax rate was set.
So, so we paid an additional two hundred thousand dollars per month plus. So how, what, what, how, what are you talking about, extra revenue, leftover money, why are we paying two hundred thousand more?
I just don't understand how it happened when it did, you know, cause I thought that their, all their numbers were set like at different time periods.
Yeah.
Cause we're off by six months, you know, cause they follow the state calendar.
The fiscal calendar, fiscal year.
Yeah, and we're calendar, you know, the calendar year, so. Yeah, so seeing how this all works out together, um. Yeah, let's keep bringing it to you as I get it, you know, try to understand it all better.
Yeah, I get it.
And why wasn't that. Publicized, you know, by them. Um, and that was one reason why I asked. For, it wasn't poorly, cause I was looking for, you know, a two million dollar cut anyways, cause ten percent's a good starting point. You know, you should be able to do it, and then when I got that information from you, it was like, as I was walking into one of those meetings, like, I think it's last Thursday. And I looked at it and I was like, oh, there is, you know, one point three million dollars already that is being returned. So can you find the other eight hundred thousand or whatnot and reduce it?
Returned, it's just, the amount's just being reduced, so I, I don't.
They called it returned, but then I think it wasn't. At, an actual return back to us, but that's why I'm just like trying to pull this all together and figure it out. And why people didn't know.
Right.
I don't know, but that's on their end.
Right.
Um, to let people know, you know, whether or not, but if it could have been that much higher. It'd be pretty concerning too.
Or should have been lower.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. That's it. That's all I got for now.
Cool.
Alrighty.
And a numskull. Well, try to take in all their acronyms and. They actually have, um. I think it was uh fifteen or sixteen people like at like support office. So it's, you know, what they can turn out for information. Uh, five and one alternate.
You said fifteen, sixteen people?
Advisory committee?
Yeah.
Wow.
And that's what's interesting, I think that the only reason that it's formalized like that is because. The adoption of the advisory budget committee for the school was done through warrant. So they asked the voters, you know, shall we, or should we, you know, start a, an advisory budget committee and everybody said yes. So then that's what gives it. Some type of vote and you'll see that on the bottom, usually it's five to nothing, s- you know, school board, you know, five, like they approve everything. So there's the school board and the advisory budget committee's recommendation or not.
Interesting.
So it'll be interesting to see what happens, you know, coming out of this, because with the group that's there now, if certain things don't happen. I, it's not going to be a unanimous uh decision, I don't feel.
So, but it's advisory, so they can just say, whatever, we don't care what you say.
And it'll be interesting to see if they actually include it on the warrant, like even if it dissents from the school board, but we'll see.
Interesting.
Yeah, you don't know it till you go through it and check it out, yeah. Alright, that's all I got.
Who's already asleep?
I'm fine, I've just been up since four thirty this morning.
Me too.